We good now? All right. Welcome to the Town of Lake Clark Shore's second public hearing for the 2022-2023 town budget. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Paul Schalhoub.
Present.
Vice Mayor Robert Schalhoub.
Here.
President Pro Tem Gregory Freebold.
Here.
Councilmember Valentin Rodriguez.
Here.
And Councilmember Robert Gonzalez.
All right. You can all stand for a moment of silence in remembrance of Tom, Thomas Tom Fratz, who was a resident of Lake Clark Shores for 37 years. He passed away too young, the age of 70. May his memory be eternal. Father Peter, welcome. Would you be so kind as to lead us in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let us pray. Oh heavenly Father, as we begin this meeting, we ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead this town in which we live, work, and play. We ask for your guidance, wisdom, support. Help us to engage in meaningful discussions and nurture the bonds of this community and to do what is right and good and for the community. May they and we speak out when it's time to speak out and listen and be patient and receptive when it's time to listen. May they and we always be guided by the spirit of community and by the spirit of love. As you saved your holy apostles from perishing in a storm by calming wind and waves when you command, so now keep us and our brothers and sisters and fellow citizens safe from the approaching hurricane. Stir us, steer us from flood, fire, illness, injury, disaster, and sudden death. Preserve us from all evil and harm and protect us by your hands. For together, the Father with no beginning, in that all holding good life-given spirit are God whom we live, move, and have been now in different ages of ages. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Father Peter. Always a beautiful invocation.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Robert Gonzalez is now present.
Thank you very much. All right. Time for our second public hearing of the town budget. Mr. Clark, could you be so kind as to do a presentation?
I'll be brief. So we're presenting the 2023 town budget this evening. If the clicker will work, we are. There we go. We budget five different funds because each fund has to be accounted for in a slightly different fashion. We're going to talk about those funds briefly tonight. We always start with our core mission and look at the things that we have to provide to the community, and then we move on from there. We're talking about the general fund first. There's no change to the millage rate. We're holding 6.2798 for the 13th year in a row. The current year rollback would be 5.6155. The current year taxable value is $338.7 million, and that's up 12.61% from last year. No changes in labor and staffing and no changes in benefits. Merit increase of 4% is in the budget. The CPI was up at 8.8%. Irritating when things don't go the way you would like them to. Special events.
But we can turn our page, you know.
Well, this is, this is being broadcast, so it's important to get it up there. Special events are back to normal except for the loop around the lake, and we're working on that for next year. Garbage collections up 3%. Our capital budget is $5.6 million, and that has largely to do with the bridge and the pickleball courts that are in next year's budget.
You mean 1.6?
Sorry?
The number of there was 1.6 million?
1.599.
Right, okay.
You said 6. You said 5.6.
Right.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to clarify.
You got all of our attention, though.
Whoa.
You pay attention, where will you miss?
So we have, man, you guys are throwing me off tonight. This is quite a challenge. So our general fund capital budget includes some items that we have been postponing for a number of years. This year, we finally have the opportunity to get back and do some of those. A new surface on the tennis courts, replacing the carpeting in the police station and in town hall, in the chambers here. A new paint job. None of this has been done since the buildings were opened in 2007. A number of other items in the capital budget that are necessary as well. Utility fund is unbalanced this year, and that's because we're drawing out of reserves to do some capital projects. Staffing is the same. Salary increases 4% as with the general fund budget. New initiatives this year. We have two small pump station upgrades. We're starting, Palm Beach County is starting the widening of Lawrence Road. That's going to require us to move some of our pipes, to remove some of our pipes, as well as make some new connections. We're purchasing a new high-head standby pump for lift station number one down south and working on sewer force main that has been giving us problems for the last two years. Capital budget includes finalizing the 12-inch water main project, the Lawrence Road widening, and the pump station R and R. Again, our capital budget, just as I said, the force main is 1,750 feet. Infrastructure surtax fund, we're estimating revenues of $269,000. We have planned expenditures of $214,500. We're looking at, in those expenditures, drainage repair, road maintenance, and loan principal and interest on our bridge loan. Estimated carry forward at the end of the year will be $419,500. The CRA fund, estimated revenues from the county will be $45,017. Estimated revenue from the town is $60,000. Our planned expenditures are $136,000, and that includes our continuing our business incentive program, updating some of our codes, park improvements, and the pickleball grant match monies. The ARPA fund, there's no new revenue expected in the ARPA fund. We've gotten all of our money. The ARPA fund is such that we only budget revenue to match expenditures, so we're planning on spending $490,000. We show $490,000 in revenue. Our actual number was $908,000 and change. That will come, the rest of that or some more of that will come back in the next two years as we work our plan to spend that money on infrastructure improvements. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Sorry for the rough start there. Pardon me?
When do you anticipate the boat lift starting?
Probably not. We gotta get the bridge kicked off first, so it's probably going to be May realistically.
Okay.
Any questions?
I'm excited for the boat lift. We were going down by West Palm Beach, and they've got a couple of their boats in the water, and it kind of got me thinking, you know, Lake Clark Shores would be ready, willing, and able if something, God forbid, were to happen out in the lake. It would definitely be a big resource. I remember when I was about 13 years old, there was a ski accident. I was onboard, and the throttle got stuck. I wasn't driving, but there was a young lady that her leg got stuck in the propeller, and had we had somebody in the water, probably would have been a lot quicker to get, you know, rescue out there. As it is, it took quite a while, so I think that's going to be a really big benefit for our residents. Thank you, Dan.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I appreciate all the hard work and staff, too.
I agree. All right, we're going to go a little bit out of order, and I want to have audience comments first. The agenda calls for the council comments, so we're going to just reorder that and audience comments. Anyone here in the audience have any questions? We'll start with Mr. Daughtry. If you're listening virtually, please, no, you can email or type in questions virtually or raise your hand.
Tim Daughtry, 1410 Keller Road. I've watched this budget explode through the years I've been in Lake Clark Shores. The taxes need to be rolled back. We just had a budget that increased, well, our revenues increased by 12%, our taxable, taxable by 12%. That's a tax increase. That, there's no other way to say that, okay? We need to roll the taxes back. Counties rolled back taxes. School boards rolled back taxes. Lots of municipalities are cutting their tax rates because of the increased revenues available, because of the increases in real estate values in this county. It's time for us to do the very same thing. Why are we not doing that? I've watched the budget explode. I've seen the salaries paid to our employees in town to reach a pretty high level, okay, for a small town, for a very small town. I've driven by this town at 2:00 in the afternoon during shift change and seen all the SUVs out in front of this building. We need to go on a diet. It's that simple. We need to cut back what we're spending. The word fiduciary has been mentioned time and time and time again in this council chambers, okay? Being a fiduciary means acting on watching where we're spending our money. We need to really watch where we're spending our money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience present here would like to speak on the budget? All right. Mr. Clark, do we have any written questions or hands raised online?
We have a hand up from Carol Sheenan.
Okay. Carol Shane.
Hey, good afternoon. Actually, this is Jeff Sheehan. My question had to do with the timing and the scope of the work on the Keller, on the Pine Tree Bridge. I do see the response that DOT said it could start in March or April, but what exactly is the scope of the project going to be?
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions for us to address in a moment? Mr. Shane?
Not for the budget. I did have a comment regarding one of the items on the agenda for later.
All right. We'll get to that in a moment. Thank you. Any other written questions in? Any other comments from the audience before we move on to council comments? All right. Well, we'll kick off council comments with Councilman Rodriguez.
I just, I think our budget's very reasonable. You know, I actually pulled the, the good news is we're up $100 million more adjusted taxable value from 2017. I found a 2017 report over here, back here, and I'm just wondering, like, so that's good news.
Councilman Rodriguez, if you'd pull your mic over, please.
I'm sorry. I said we're up $100 million in taxable value from five years ago this month, which I think is a great thing for the town. But as you know, I mean, obviously everything's expensive, and I don't think we've ever been extravagant in this town with what we spend. I feel like we're frugal in many respects. I don't think the employees are overpaid. I think it's very hard to keep employees, and I wish we could pay them more. I feel like our police officers are majorly underpaid, and that's one of the reasons why we don't have a bunch of police officers who can stay with us. But I think overall as a town, we do everything we can with what we have, and I don't see any excessive spending at all. I never have, and I'm only hoping the property values do increase. I think it just gives us some more flexibility for some of the projects we have. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Councilman Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we look at the budget and addressing the millage rate, what's funny sometimes is that you have municipalities that try to, I'm going to use air quotes, "roll back," and they do it in a funny way, and they will do it with very small numbers sometimes, and that's quite concerning. So, for example, you know, they'll do a .004 adjustment, and that's a very small adjustment. And one of the benefits of living here in Florida is that we have this, you know, homestead exemption, and they cap the taxes at 3% per year. So a lot of, a lot of the longtime residents, year over year, it's going to be an increase of $40 to $80. I think mine are going up $80 or $100. And so we've had residents here in the past that, that talk about rampant inflation with construction costs, and I think that it's important to look at that and address that, that also impacts our municipality, our town, our way that we govern. We, we went to Florida League of Cities. For those of you that don't know, Florida League of Cities is essentially every municipality in the state of Florida that gets together and kind of is able to share ideas and share their budgets and share their vision and how they do things and how they make things work. What I realize is that we have a very small budget, and with a very small budget, we have to make sure that that budget spreads around all of our different facilities, and that's very, very difficult with a very small town. I think that we do an excellent job doing that, and I do want to take a moment to applaud our police and the staff for hanging in there with us because unfortunately, our police, based on, on recent data, is one of the least paid police forces, and that's saddening to me because of everything they do for us, you know, and they put themselves in harm's way for us. They check on our homes when we're not there. And so that's, that's my comments about the budget. I don't think that we are here spend excessively. I think that we've seen an incredible growth in our community, and people want certain services. So, thank you.
Thank you. President Pro Tem Freebold?
Yep, just a quick word on the budget regarding the increases in staff pay. We have continuously, over the years, had problems with people leaving. We get quality employees. They leave. They go to other places for sometimes $10,000 to $15,000 more, so we haven't really increased it that much because they still leave. So, I mean, we're just trying to come in line. We have a lot of deferred maintenance. Mr. Clark, thank you for all your diligent work. I'm putting it together, and we'll implement it and look forward in to the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
You know, I sit here meeting after meeting after meeting, and they say, "Go back to rollback. We need to go on a diet." It's that and the other. Lake Clark Shores Police Department is one of the lowest, if not the lowest, police departments in Palm Beach County. One police officer just left and increased his salary by $30,000. At one time, Lake Clark Shores Police Department matched, and our goal was $1 more than Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. That was many years ago. Now we don't even come close. They're starting salaries. How much, chief?
It's 49, and most of the departments are starting at 60 and 70 and 80.
So stop it. Highest, you know, we need to, high salaries, we don't pay high salaries. Can't even staff the police department full-time because they can't get anybody to make an application for a job. Stop it. We're not full staff in, in the administration because we can't get the people to come in for the pay that we're offering. Stop it. Don't just tell us, you know, we need to go on a diet. Find something in the, in the budget where we're overspending. I challenge you. Stop it. Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clark. You did a great job.
Thank you.
All right. Charlie, do I have to officially end the public hearing part before we move on to the approval of the resolutions?
You should close the
That's what I thought.
Public hearing portion, yes.
All right. We're going to close the public hearing portion of the budget meeting or the budget hearing. Thank you. And we're going to move on to the approval of resolutions. The first resolution to approve is Resolution 2022-18-Adoption of 2022-2023 Millage Rate. Charlie, can you read the resolution, please?
Do you want me to read the entire resolution or just the title?
Just the title.
Just the title. Thank you. Resolution number 2022-18, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, adopting a millage rate of 6.2798 mils for the fiscal year 2022/2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution 2022-19-Adoption of 2022-2023 Budget.
Resolution number 2022-19, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, adopting a budget for fiscal year 2022/2023 and providing for an effective date.
So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Before we adjourn, Dan, there was a question asked about this, when's the bridge project going to start? Do you have any information on that?
Yeah, I responded that DOT is telling us it'll probably start between March and April. His follow-on question, it's a total replace of the existing Pine Tree Bridge.
No, thank you. Take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Going to move on now to the Town of Lake Clark Shores Town Council Meeting for September 27, 2022. I have a roll call, please.
Mayor, Mayor Paul Schalhoub.
Present.
Vice Mayor Robert Schalhoub.
Here.
President Pro Tem Gregory Freebold.
Here.
Councilmember Valentin Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Gonzalez.
Here.
Take a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Take a motion to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
There's a second by President Pro Tem. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're going to move on now to unfinished business. This is the second and final reading of Ordinance 2022-04, prohibiting loud, excessive, unnecessary, or unusual noise within town parks. Charlie?
Ordinance number 2022-04, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, amending section 38-3, noise of Article 1 in general of Chapter 38, Parks and Recreation, of the Town's Code of Ordinances, to prohibit any unreasonably loud, excessive, unnecessary, or unusual noise within park properties, providing for inclusion in the Code of Ordinances, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you, Charlie. I'll take some audience comments now on the, on this ordinance. Yes, sir, please come on up and introduce yourself. Good to see you again.
Good evening. George Shear, 1600 Barbados. Mr. Mayor, I had emailed you back in September regarding some concerns I had with that particular ordinance, and you were going to forward it on to Mr. Clark and his deputy, and I'm not sure where that stands, but what I want to do is give some comment on the ordinance itself. Thank you very much for addressing something like this. I think it's, you know, I feel that we're making some real progress toward this, and I've come up here and tried to express my concern to the neighborhood and, but I do have a few questions about how it's going to be enforced and who's going to be the arbiter and how it's going to be enforced. We also have a sign out there at the pavilion that says, "No loud music," okay? And we also have a renter sheet for the pavilion that says, "No loud music will be tolerated." So it all sounds good, and I'm very happy about the progress, but I really would like to get some understanding about what it really means. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional audience comments before we move on to council comments? Anything written in?
No, sir.
Hands raised? All right. We'll move on to council action. I would like to discuss this and have the chief provide a little commentary, gentlemen, before we take action on this. I did forward the information along, and there's a, we'll call it a new policy in place for how to enforce the noise ordinance, whether, when it comes to the pavilion chief.
Right. We, that's how I work on it. We looked at some ordinances that were done with West Palm and some other cities to kind of be consistent.
Chief, please use the mic. We developed a policy, and we looked at some policies in West Palm and some other cities to try to be consistent. So the policy has, has been done. The manager has a copy. We have a copy. I don't know if you've received it yet. I think what the manager was looking at is our next regular council meeting to disseminate this and discuss it. But we, we do have a policy. If you'd like a copy, you get with the manager. We'll get it to you. Also, we're doing individual training and discussing exactly what we would like them to do and comply with the policy, understanding and operating the sound meter in the park.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I also add that we've been looking, staff has been looking at a registration process for DJs. It seems as though there are some event companies that are advertising our pavilion for a great place to have a party, and of course, they're going to be the sound that's associated with that party. So we're looking at changing our application, changing the deposit that we keep, looking at registering those event-type people and the DJs, making sure that we know who they are and have control over what they're doing in a little bit more meaningful fashion than we do now.
Thank you. All right. Any additional council comment on this issue?
No.
I do. All right.
Vice Mayor? Charlie. It states here that Section 1, "It shall be unlawful for any person to make, continue, or cause to be made or continued any unreasonably loud, excessive, unnecessary, unusual noise, as provided in Section 34 hyphen 43 of the Code of Ordinances within park properties." I have a copy of Section 34 hyphen 43, and it's very nebulous. It just says loud and excessive and unnecessary. But if you go to Section 34 hyphen 45, that's where they have thirty-four hyphen forty-five, that's where they have the decibel
Yes.
re, the, the decibel, um, ranges.
And thirty-four forty-four sets forth, uh, the standards to be looked at when determining whether there is a noise violation.
Do we need to?
I would recommend that, and, and we can do that and still pass this, uh, ordinance, uh, tonight. I would recommend that we amend this to say Section thirty-four dash forty-three. And you can either use the words at sec, which means and following, or we add thirty-four forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five.
Because, you know, my note is, um, well, how are you going to enforce it, what's loud? And then, pardon me?
And subsection forty-five addresses by decibel level what is considered loud.
Right, and then was there an issue, uh, maybe I missed it, um, please forgive me. Uh, was there a concern, um, on amplified sound?
Uh, there has been a concern about amplified sound, uh, I believe the first draft of the ordinance that I wrote, uh, uh, had a prohibition of amplified sound. Uh, but the town staff suggested that, uh, they were uncertain as to what the definition of amplified sound was. Did it include, uh, someone using a, uh, mobile phone with a speaker? And so that language was deleted.
I draw your attention to, uh, Section thirty-four hyphen forty-three. Let's see if this doesn't embrace amplified sound. The using operating permitted to be played user operating radio, receiving set, television set, musical instrument, or other machine or device for producing or reproducing sound.
Which subsection are you looking at?
Go to thirty-four hyphen forty-three subsection two. And it says the operation of any such set, instrument, photograph, or machine, it seems like that embraces amplified sound. Draw your attention to subsection ten, sound amplifier. Does it?
Yes, it does, address both of them.
It, it's
Doesn't prohibit their use, but it certainly regulates the amount
Well, was, was the concern to prohibit amplified sound? I'm trying to understand.
That was the request, prohibit amplified sound.
How are you going to prohibit amplified sound?
That's why we asked to have it taken out.
Okay, I was, I was confused as to, you know, the concern over amplified sound. Because it, I thought it's covered here, but if it comes within that range and it exceeds that range and you've got the decibel reader, right?
Correct.
Everybody has, is, is, the police officers are specially trained for that, code enforcement's specially trained for that.
Correct.
It seems like we have, um, we, we have a remedy.
And we're going to do some other things to ensure that we have better control over who's using the pavilion.
You know, um, last year or so, I went and I, um, on vacation and, uh, we rented an Airbnb and, um, um, some people were outside playing and having fun and we got a phone call because the noise was, was too loud. Evidently, there is a meter that was outside that triggered a phone call to the manager. Maybe that's something that, you know, can, we can look into and see, you know, how much it would cost to install that over in the town pavilion. This could help. It could alert the town, it could alert the police department.
I, I
The gentleman, um, you know, he wants his peace and quiet, that's why he moved into this town. I want to do everything we can to protect all of our neighbors, not being interrupted with loud, unruly partygoers.
DJs.
Yeah. Thank you, Charlie.
Mr. Vice Mayor, your, your point is very well taken, the challenge here is the numbers that are in our ordinance don't necessarily address all of the issues. So buying a device that we tie to a certain decibel may not be a decibel that, um, that does what we want it to do. So there's, there, we don't want to have one approach to this, we want to have a multitude of approaches to be able to address this issue. So just saying seventy-five dB, that's, that's probably not appropriate, but saying, um, the good old walk up and, and tap the guy on the shoulder and say, can you please lower the music, we're getting some complaints, doesn't have a number associated with it and most of the time it's very effective. Um, so I, I don't want to, I don't want to lock in an officer to saying, hey, this alarm didn't go off, so everything's just fine. And, and that's one of the reasons why the chief went through his training policy is it's not one size fits all, it's let's do what we can to address the gentleman's issue, but we're going to do it in a lot of different ways.
Correct. I understand, I buy into it, you had me at hello. You okay, George? We're trying.
I appreciate everything you guys are doing, I, I have some more information to share with you later.
We'll get together after the meeting. Okay. Okay.
Well.
Stay tuned.
Mayor, may I say a couple of comments?
Sure.
So just real quickly, uh, Charlie, thank you very much, I think that it'd be great to incorporate some of the other sections. You know, I want to make sure that this goes forward so that, that we're, we're moving forward and we're actually gaining ground on this, I know that it's a little uh, subjective, the way that it's written, and I want to make sure that we're able to enforce something, but what this does is it gives our officers, to Dan's point, um, some discretion in being able to, to address, uh, these partygoers. I'm very, very frustrated and very upset that I think it's been on two or three, uh, different weekends that they have essentially trashed, uh, our pavilion. Um, and, and that's, that's really unsettling for me, and then now to get wind of, of the fact that there are, uh, DJs or bands or you know, commercial event planners, um, that are utilizing our location in a neighborhood setting to put together keen says and birthday parties and the whole entire thing. That's not what that pavilion, um, I mean, that's what the pavilion was, was intended for, but certainly not, it was, was to gather our residents, it was to gather the families, it wasn't to throw these huge, um, these huge parties with, with huge amplified music. I'm not opposed to some amplified music, but certainly the placement of the speakers. Um, I don't know if you guys have ever been behind the DJ booth, but if you're behind the speaker, the speaker placement's really, really important, so by positioning that speaker to have the open end of it facing Georgia's house, that's going to immediately cause you more discomfort and more frustration. It's going to be a lot louder than having those speakers placed facing away from you. And so I, I could imagine a situation where if we can amend, and then I'll get with Dan this, on this later, um, that rental application, we should be having the DJs or whatever commercial entity registering, we should have a credit card on file so that they, if they do, you know, trash the, the pavilion, we have some sort of financial recourse. These DJs should be registering, um, and then also giving them a guide as to where they can actually place amplified music. Um, sending it over into the commercial area would be much better, um, than aiming it directly at any one particular house, so. And, and I just, I want to make a mention that the police, uh, our police department did have extensive training, I know that a couple of us have already said that. You know, to, to make sure that we are equipped to deal with that, so it's a step in the right direction, it's not going to be the complete step, it's not going to completely eliminate it, but at least it gives us another tool, so we're for it.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Does that motion to approve include the addition of thirty-four dash forty-four and thirty-four dash forty-five or not?
Yes.
I heard that part of the motion.
So the motion is to approve it with the amendment, uh, provided in Sections thirty-four dash forty-three, comma, thirty-four dash forty-four, and thirty-four dash forty-five.
That is my motion. Thank you, Mr. Shek.
Sure.
I, I think it might be better to say at sec because that's, there's thirty-four forty-six is also
At sec is the abbreviation for the Latin at sequitentes and that means and the following.
So I will amend my motion. My motion is the motion as written in our agenda, um, including at sec behind thirty-four dash forty-three, so it'd be thirty-four dash forty-three, comma, space, at sec, period.
Is there a second to the amended motion?
Yeah, I'll do.
All right, Councilman Rodriguez, all in favor of the motion as amended?
So moved.
All right.
Did you want to include forty-six?
Yeah, we, I want to include anything afterwards.
So at sec will do it, right?
Yes.
Okay, motion carry, are we good, Charlie?
Yes, we are.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks, gentlemen.
And, and that's an, an amendment that we can make without this going back to first reading.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the, uh, ongoing, uh, status of the Sept of Sewer. Dan, any new updates here? With regard to, we, I know we got the permitting, but where are we now on the funding?
Still waiting for information from DEP, so probably be late October, early November.
Right.
Thank you. Any council comments or questions, things you want to discuss about the project?
Dan, I did want to let you know I did attend the meeting on Tuesday last week. There was really no new information, it was all a bunch of engineering types, but they were just like kind of, um, they were just kind of pointing everybody in the right direction, giving them information on how to go about it, how to address the funding, where things are at within the state and all that kind of stuff, so just wanted to update you on that.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, going to move on to new business. This is the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero five prohibiting the discharge of air rifles or air guns within the town of Lake Clark Shores.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash zero five, an ordinance of the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, amending Article One in general of Chapter thirty miscellaneous provisions and offenses by creating a new section thirty dash zero five air guns prohibiting the discharge of an air rifle or air gun in, on, across, from, or into any public property within the town, providing for exceptions, providing for penalties, providing for inclusion in the code of ordinances, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you. Any audience comments on this ordinance? Yes?
William Murphy, eighteen forty-one Evergreen Drive, is a paintball gun because it's air-powered in this ordinance?
That's not how I read it, but, Charlie?
I don't believe a paintball gun is included.
Okay, I just
Well, let, let, here, here's, let's read the language and be certain. An air rifle or air pistol is defined as any gun or device which shoots a bullet, shot, or pellet, or other projectile by means of air COT car, CO2 cartridge springs or bands.
So that would include
That would include That would include, uh,
Thank you.
Pink gun.
Charlie.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Sure.
This is not a prohibition on using air guns in Lake Clark Shores. This is a prohibition for stopping people from shooting from the water or over the water. So if you still want to address your nuisance critters in your yard with an air gun, you're allowed to do that.
You just can't do it on public property.
Correct.
Or, or open water.
Or across the open water, but if I have permission of the landowner, am I okay?
This This ordinance doesn't address a private landowner.
That's correct. Like, if you're standing on your private property.
Yeah.
When this does, I don't see, view this as addressing, uh, that issue, well, whatever you're suggesting, you're suggesting shooting over the water
Let's use hypotheticals.
To another private property.
Let's say I see there's a, um,
Juicy Iguana?
Iguana on Rodney's property.
Okay.
Okay, and I go boom and I shoot it, okay, am I in violation of this ordinance?
Yes, shooting over the water.
But if Rodney says Bob, that's okay.
Well, because you're doing it across public water.
Water, and that's Lake Worth.
So does But I have Rodney's permission.
But it's, you're still going across the water.
Okay.
Yeah, the harm's still there even with his permission.
Yeah.
And, and the concern is if there's somebody on that water body, they become, uh, a, a problem and, and a possible
Well, I understand the, the safety, I understand the purpose, I understand everything, I was just thinking, you know, if there's, you know where I'm thinking.
It, it would not prohibit you from using the air rifle on your property to your neighbor's property
So long as
Provided you had their consent.
So, so long as there's no water in between.
No public property.
Right. That's the key thing.
Yeah. Charlie and I had a pedagogical conversation earlier today about this, so I thought I'd share it with you.
Understood. All right. Any additional audience comments, yes? It's okay. Always love to see you here.
Anne Warren, seventy-five twenty-four Edgewater Circle. This talk of shooting creatures, you shouldn't shoot any creature that's not harmful. Why should you shoot an Iguana? Tell me somebody who has been attacked by an Iguana. You just don't that's not the right way to live, to shoot harmless creatures like that. Really isn't.
Well, this will cut down on it.
Well, it should be eliminated, I don't, I mean, you shouldn't be allowed to shoot an Iguana in your own yard. It's not hurting anything. I mean, you know, they make good pets.
Thank you. Any written or, written in questions or hands raised online?
No, sir. Question by Sean Roman.
All right.
Mr. Roman is self-muted.
Mr. Roman, if you unmute yourself, you can talk when you're ready.
He wrote in a question saying she does have a point.
Okay.
And I want to make sure that everyone knows we are not promoting or encouraging the shooting of any critters. We are simply not prohibiting what the state law allows, uh, at the current time.
Thank you for this, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on now to council action, take a motion on the ordinance. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. That brings us now to audience comments. Is, uh, we'll start with it withdraw it, all right, we'll start with Mr. Daughtry. You were the first on my list, Bill.
I don't see anything on the agenda that relates to that.
No problem.
Tim Daughtry, fourteen-ten Keller Road. You mentioned we have permits for the suburbs, okay, so at the present time we're moving forward. I haven't seen a vote of the town council about moving forward. Yeah, okay. I've asked questions many times and I've yet to get answers on any number of them. We were talking about plans with cost estimates, I've yet to see that for every phase of this project, okay, I've asked that several times, still haven't seen it. When are we going to have a date certain that we actually have the actual finalized plans with finalized cost estimates? We've talked about having a meeting where we can share ideas and share about where we're going to go with this and where we're going to move forward with this. We have yet to set up that meeting where we have townspeople We have yet to set up that meeting where we have townspeople and town councils sit together and discuss these issues, a give and take, a real give and take of what we're going to do and how we're going to go forward with this. Date certain for that would be appreciated. Okay, I I've said we're going forward, we're going forward, we're going forward. We're going to have this happen. We're going to have this happen. We're going to have this happen. Never any dates certain on this. Okay, it's always, oh, it's going to happen. It's going to happen. It's going to happen. Can we get some finalization on when these dates are going to occur? When will we see a plan? Deal with the runoff, the poisons in the lake. I haven't seen a written plan on how we're going to deal with the runoff and the poisons that are already in the lake and the poisons we're adding to the lake to kill the weeds in the lake. Still haven't seen a plan on that. Where are the plants? Where are the things in writing that we're going to be certain of going forward? And where's the votes on going forward with each and every parts of these issues? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional audience comments? Yes, sir.
Please don't stop the clock yet. I have something I would like you guys to please look at in your free time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George, it's not a virus, is it? You're not a mastermind hacker, are you? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
How do you put it in the U?
Ask your parent.
George here, sixteen hundred Barbados again. First, I want to start off on a positive note. The last two weekends at my house in this pavilion have been glorious. Peace and quiet, tranquility, football outside, nice music, beer, barbecue, all the things that, you know, we kind of enjoy during the fall season. However, on September tenth and September eleventh, was a bad weekend over here and not a great weekend for me either. So I'm sharing with you some video I came over here and took and what I want you to look at the video, I know you hear me complain or I'm probably one of the only few people in neighborhood complaining, but I have taken an informal poll. And there's some people that are upset too, but I don't understand why they don't come over here and express their, you know, dissatisfaction with it. But um, on September tenth, we had a group over here from three to nine. They stopped at nine o'clock. I was outside with a group of people and we were competing with the noise over here. I mean, it just the bass, the bass reverberates. So that was at nine o'clock when that ended, but on Sunday, on the eleventh, there's a group that came over at one o'clock and they left at eight thirty. Okay, and they were loud. I mean, they were crazy loud and you'll see the videos in there. So I want you to imagine those videos of that music you hear, the thirty or forty second videos, but imagine that for six to eight hours. So we go back to the amplified sound in, I don't understand why there's so much confusion about the amplified sound. Palm Beach County Parks and Recreation has a policy. It's right here. Okay. I've shared it with everybody on the D S. Okay. And they define amplified sound. They have bands, DJs, P A systems, large speakers, car stereos must be approved for use. They have a permitting process, which Town Manager Clark mentioned, which I think is really a step in the right direction. Then if you turn to page two of the ordinance, there's twenty-four parks, county parks in Palm Beach County that outlaw all amplified music. They don't allow it. They don't want it. If you want to have music, you have a personal music advice device. And it's a fifty-foot radius that you can hear the music. So what was interesting tonight was to hear that these DJs are promoting our park on their website because hey, I can have a great party for you. Let's go to Lake Clark Shores. Let's trash their pavilion. Let's go in there and, you know, play this music for all day. Nobody's going to say anything. So it's just interesting how that's come full circle and that, you know, is really what happens because these DJs come here and they just go and they go and they go. So. But I really don't understand who we're afraid of being sued by. Are we being afraid of being sued by Frankie Smith that can't rent the pavilion? Because he can't have an amplified sound system.
Time's up, Mr. Schur.
Okay. I mean, who are we scared of?
Thank you. Any additional audience comments? From those who are here? In the back? No? Okay.
Nobody online.
All right. Thank you all very much. We're going to move on to status reports. Start with the chief.
There are no status.
Oh, there are no status reports. My apologies.
This is an extra meeting.
I remembered that, yeah. All right, moving right on to council comments. We'll start with Councilman Gonzalez.
Thank you all. Keep it short. At the, just kind of putting this out there, is there something that we can prohibit amplified music on Sundays? Just kind of dovetailing off of George's comments. You know, maybe maybe Sunday. I don't know if that's something that's ministerial and and that's something that we could put in the application. But certainly Sunday's is a day of rest for many people. So maybe that's just an idea. Wanted to take my hats off to Chief Smith. He's been making sure everybody's and and Mr. Clark making sure that our town is prepared whichever way the storm goes. It's very reassuring. I think everybody should know and realize the amount of effort and preparation that goes in to any name storm that that threatens us, our our town, our community, even if it decides to go somewhere else. But there's a lot of forethought whether it affects us or not. There's a lot of preparation that goes into it. And I sleep a little bit better knowing that we're prepared for it. So thank you very much on that. And I was noticing today in Lake Worth that many of the drainage, the drains there along Dixie Highway were were plugged up. And so just for those of you that are here in person or those of you that are online, please make sure you keep those drains clear if they're on your on or near your property. That is your responsibility to help out the town and make sure we don't sink. Also, over the past couple of weeks, I've seen more and more pedestrians, people walking, jogging, walking in very dark clothing. So just please wear reflectors, wear light clothing. Remember that the that the headlights are basically only going to see something from your waist down. The jackets, the reflective jackets are really helpful, but if you really want to get the point across, those light headlight beams are going from your waist down to your ankles. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez?
Yeah, I have a question for Charlie. Charlie, would it be?
Your microphone, please.
Be appropriate in a park situation with a rental of the pavilion to have a differential fee structure for residents versus non-residents use of the structure. I know it's kind of a loaded question and I know there has to be a rational basis for it, but I'm I'm just wondering if we could maybe look into that idea because sometimes when you have residents who have a more of a stake in the community and, you know, quality of what's going on here, they may treat it better. They may be more respectful to people like Mr. Shore, Mr. Schur, or or just be more respectful of the rules.
We we need to look at that and I'll tell you the reason why. If we've received funds from the county for any of the improvements in the park, we are most likely prohibited from having a differential fee. But we can look at that and get an answer to.
Right, because I know the county, when they set up their fees, they have they have different differential fees as well. I mean, I know you can charge different fees for residents versus non-residents. I deal with that in Palm Beach all the time and all these other places. But I just like there, I'd like us to work on this idea of having more responsibility at at the pavilion and perhaps that would have to be with fees. Perhaps it would should be for more restrictions. I agree. The idea of regulating the DJs is completely appropriate and and probably should be a part of it because what we are, what we need to legally do is discourage this type of behavior in any way we can. You know, because as council members, we could be living where he is. But for, you know, whatever reasons, we're not where he is and we don't have to worry about that coming in the back. As for the air gun issue, I'm really happy we passed that. I have a neighbor across the way and I love him to death. But he goes out there and shoots iguanas all the time and I know it's his pastime or whatever. But when I'm in my pool on the other side, I'm just waiting for like a ricochet coming across the canal and hitting one of us in the eye or the baby or something. And I'm like always very nervous about that. So I'm hoping that we can, now that we've passed the ordinance or is this first reading?
It's the first reading.
We can do some education. I like to have an education component to it as well because I don't think he ever thinks about, oh, my B B or pellet ricochets across the water and lands in your pool and hits somebody. I remember one time I got hit me eye with a ricochet B B and I couldn't see for four days. And I was like a little kid and I mean, I just can't imagine that happening. Um, I tend to agree with Ms. Warren. I don't like to kill any animal. I remember one time I killed a sparrow and I felt terrible. But some people love to kill them and I don't mind having dead animals in my house. I have wolves and stuff like that. So I I don't do it. I let other people do it. I am repulsed by this Iguana thing that they have this tour to come in and Lake Clark Shores and kill. I'm just repulsed by that. I don't think I don't think when we learn of people using our town for those types of commercial purposes, we need to do stuff to discourage it. When we, when you found out about Dan, about the DJs, yeah, we need to reanalyze how that works. So I just want everyone to be safe, you know, knock on wood, we haven't had a hurricane since I've been on town council that's ever been a problem. The last set of hurricanes were, well, we had one four years ago, but it really wasn't bad, but Bob can remember in two thousand and four and two thousand and five, before I came on the council, hurricanes were a big problem and we went, we went a big stretch without it. And I just hope everyone remains safe. People have been calling me asking how the town can help. And I just refer them to the police chief and to Dan. You know, in the event that we have any other problems. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, since two of y'all have already mentioned the the noise ordinance, I wanted to ask Charlie here in a in a few minutes. But, you know, what we can do, you know, from a setting the security deposit, retention of the security deposit. Would y'all like to have the town council look, I'm sorry, town staff look into what are the max rates we can put the security deposit at? What are the issues that we can actually cite retention of the security deposit that violate certain ordinances? A way of example, the security deposit is five hundred dollars. Say, well, if you get a noise violation that you don't cure and then repeat in the same span of time, you forfeit the deposit. If there, if you stay past dark where you're not supposed to, you forfeit the security deposit, things of that nature. Some of it, the past dark might not come with a warning. But what are your thoughts on on the town looking into those types of methods to deter the these types of actions?
I I think that's a very good idea, Paul, Mayor, because we need, we, I think we need to look closer as we're getting more problems and park with it. I think we, I think there are clever ways to do it. Towns have been doing it all the time. You know, I mean, we're not a homeowners association. We can't do it the way they do it. But there's got to be a happy medium where, you know, we we can put a stake. What just repulses me is that somebody doesn't even live around here, rents the park out, trashes it, does loud music, poor whomever and Sunday morning has to go out there and clean it up. I mean, we're just paying for this. These people hardly paid anything to use that park and they got to create a lot of noise pollution and a lot of other pollution. And I mean, that doesn't make sense just because they let them have a park. I I I agree with you, Paul. I think we we should have staff probably start looking into ways to do that.
You all on board for town to do that? Can you all look into that, Charlie?
Absolutely.
To see what the max rate we can, we can charge for security deposit, what we can do to keep that deposit. You know, I know it's usually tied to the cleanup efforts and the cost for personnel to do that. But if if we can tie it to something else as well.
Okay.
That would be great to see what we could consider. Yeah.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
I'm all for a different fee structure for residents versus non-residents if we can implement that because I think that we need to take care of ourselves first and our neighbors first. So I don't know to what extent we can do a reduced fee. That's your job, not mine. I just think out loud. And then I'm interested if we need to have a conversation about no music. Period. I'm also interested in the conversation. You mentioned, George, that they they stopped at nine o'clock and they stopped at eight thirty. Is there a time cutoff when the parks close? I thought it was, you know, sunset. Yes. So again, where's the phone call to the police department to shut them down?
Well, that's just it. There, I think that's part of the things that were addressed recently by the chief and his staff, his officers. I haven't seen the full extent of the training, but, you know, part of that's going to be need to look at.
I I'm all for a conversation. I'd also draw everyone's attention to the general revenue line item thirty-six two hundred rental fees. Chief, Dan, does that include the the rental fees for the park? But it says rental fees, six thousand dollars is in the budget.
Probably.
And then I'm sitting here going, you know, the I'm just sitting here going, six thousand dollars.
Money.
You know, this this thinking out loud. Maybe we, you know, anything we can do for our, I think, the residents, I think it we should take a strong look at it. Anyhow, but also do we need to have a conversation of no music?
Or surcharge to use music.
Well, only if everybody agrees that lives next to the park.
Mr. Mayor.
If the options, like if you're going to use music, you have to leave us an extra two or dollar deposit.
I think that George will say, hey, look, I'll give you two hundred dollars not to have music.
Well, for what he's for what for, to your point, Vice Mayor. The the noise issue is only one component of what we're we're addressing, right? We're we're talking about because there's the the failure to properly, you know, leave the park in the manner in which you found it, right? So I think what you're going to, what we're asking the town attorney and staff to do is look at what our options are. They come back and they say, hey, there's not a whole lot more we can do than we're already doing. And we certainly can look at getting rid of the music. We still have the problem with the with the garbage, which and then would turn, do we care about renting this out anymore? And if we don't rent it out, people can still come and use it and do whatever they want there. So again, it's not because it's a public park. So.
Have some accountability.
Right. So there's kind of, you can, you can get rid of it and it's certainly something I think we can discuss once they get back to us what we're talking about. But we can't outright prevent people from using it. So, you know, something to consider. I'd love to see what we come back with. I'll come back with on on the amounts we can, we can charge. All right, I didn't mean to to derail all the comments, but since.
Mr. Mayor, I have two points that I wanted to bring up about the pavilion, if I may.
Sure.
You you know, years ago, when when I did events, one of the most important things was having a hold harmless, having an indemnity agreement. These are important things and and day of insurance. So what 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 concerns me is having, you know, a commercial entity coming in and utilizing our facilities as a banquet hall. And that's really what's what's kind of happening. That's going to increase the the risk of something happening there. And so if I think if we put in certain procedural methods that, you know, you're going to have somebody here that makes a living off of this. Well, then you should have the insurance. You should have a hold harmless, an indemnity agreement, and also a business tax license here with the town. They are doing business within the town limits. I think that that's fair game. It should be on on the table. I think that procedurally, those things in and of itself is going to raise the bar to entry so that at least we know who is here. But those are kind of ideas.
All right, thank you. Any additional council comments on this topic before we move to President Prochin for you all? All right.
I have no comments at this time.
Okay.
It's covered.
Sounds good. Vice Mayor?
I think we had basically just had a free for all.
That's a, it's a good opportunity for us to have discussions, which I enjoy.
So if I need. So if I need to insert my a tiered rental thing, aside from that, I think if staff is looking into it, I think another, you know, thirty minutes of of due diligence, I think is is efficient use of time. Thank you, Mr. Park.
All right. I want to thank everybody for attending today in person and online. Thank you all very much. Dan, when's our next meeting? Second Tuesday in October, yeah?
October eleventh, I believe.
October eleventh.
And we're going to Orlando.
We are, so we just finished up two weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago, our League of City meetings. There's only the two of us, I think, that were able to make it at that time. We're setting policy or we're setting our policy positions and priority positions for the league to put out there for the upcoming legislative session. So hopefully come next month, well, actually it'll be in the November meeting, we'll be able to provide you an update on where all the committees that each of us sit on, what policy positions are taking and what is expected to take place in Tallahassee in the coming session. So that's about it. Thank you all again. Have a great rest of the month and see y'all in a few weeks.
Thirty seconds. Dan, can you provide an internal memorandum to all of the town council concerning Form One financial disclosure versus Form Six financial disclosure? Because that was a topic at the Florida League of Cities.
Maybe, well, we'll work on it.
Okay, because I think it also is going to be applicable to everybody that sits on a on a board. And it's also might be applicable to the town manager.
Yeah. Based on last year's proposed legislation, it covers just about everybody. And so what I'll do is reach out to the league and get the information that was discussed last year and and circulate that.
We discussed it this year at municipal administration and.
It came up in my meeting, too.
And it came up in Paul's meeting and so I could not access a Form Six. Not only does Form Six and Form One ask for financial disclosure of your assets, but Form Six says credit cards, Visa, MasterCard, how much you owe? And, well, by the way, where's your brokerage account? How much you got in there?
Form Six is much more detailed.
Yeah.
This is Form Six.
Yeah, Form Six wants to know Visa, MasterCard, American.
Councilman Reedy from the Village of Palm Springs.
Which is going to discourage.
Sorry, this.
Volunteers coming up, because we had the example where a very well-qualified individual went to pull a packet for an election in a municipality in Palm Beach County. And when they said, oh, by the way, you're going to have to do this Form Six disclosure, this is not me.
All right, take a motion, Roger.
Some of us.
All in favor?
All right.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No problem.